Okay. Okay, it is six o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the Kingston School Committee to order with a roll call vote. Sheila Vaughn.
Here.
Jennifer Crouchen.
Here.
Jessie Keith.
Here.
Jeannie Coleman.
Here.
And I am here. This meeting is being recorded. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of the meeting should notify the chair at this time. Okay? Seeing none, do we have any visitors that would like to speak this evening? Sure.
Hi, I'm Amy Keane. I'm a teacher at Kingston Intermediate School and I just wanted to share an update from the staff at KIS about our successful American Education Week, which we celebrated in November before the holiday. We had a lot of parent events and a lot of good volunteer opportunities for parents to come in and support students in C-ACTive Learning. In grade three, we had the Invention Convention. Grade four, our annual tradition with Canada Day, celebrating our neighbors to the north. Grade five, the Living Museum, a decimal diner, and a cranberry stem challenge. And then in grade six, STEM challenges for building, marble runs. We had Spirit Week before the holiday break, and we had a really successful food drive led by one of our fifth grade students along with our school adjustment counselor, Liz Fitzgerald. And we all enjoyed our Thanksgiving feast before break. That's what's going on at KIS.
Oh, that's great. American Education Week is always fun. My kids love those. The Living Museum, personal favorite. That's great. Thank you, and Canada Day. Okay. Are there any more visitors who would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn into executive session?
I will make a motion that we adjourn to executive session, Chapter 30A, Section 21-2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, which is the assistant principal, and to comply with or act under the authority of any general law to approve executive minutes of June 9th, 2025, and September 15th, 2025, and to return to open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Sheila Vaughn.
Yes.
Jennifer Crouchen.
Yes.
Jessie Keith.
Yes.
Jeannie Coleman.
Yes.
And I am a yes. I'd like to ask everybody if you could step out for a few minutes. They shouldn't be too long, probably about 15 to 20 minutes at most.
Okay, welcome back. Thank you for your patience. Turned out our discussion was a little longer than we had anticipated. Okay, so before we move on, I'd like to see if there is a motion to approve the contract as presented to us?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Just a second.
Okay.
Okay. Sheila Vaughn?
Yes.
Jennifer Crouchen?
Yes.
Jessie Keith?
Yes.
Jeanne Coleman? Jeanne Coleman? And I am a yes. And thank you to Liz Grindel for explaining everything to us. Okay. School committee correspondence. We did receive a letter from DESI. Letting us know that because we are behind in submitting our end of year financial report, that they may be withholding our second quarter circuit breaker payment and potentially chapter 70 funds. That said, Sarah is working diligently on getting these end of year reports done, and we are hopeful that we can get everything in, in enough time to not have that outcome. The only other thing I wanted to mention is recently the Massachusetts Association of School Committees held their annual delegate convention, and Jeanne Coleman was the recipient of an outstanding member award. We appreciate all of her hard work. This is her ninth year serving on the Kingston School Committee, and she's also a member of Silver Lake. Thank you, Jeanne, for all of your time and effort. PTO report. I see Barbara. Would you like to?
Hello, everyone. I'm Barbara Gilde, president of the PTO. So just a couple of updates.
If you push it, there's a green light.
Yes.
Green light?
Did that work? All right.
Thank you.
Hi, Barbara Gilde, PTO president. Just a couple of updates. We concluded our annual check writing campaign, our Fund the Fund. So thankful for all the help that the teachers give, as well as incredible generosity of our families. We raised over $21,000, and that is all going back to the school and field trips, et cetera, et cetera. We've given out our teacher mini-grants for the year. We gave out $7,000 in mini-grants, which is in addition to about another $70,000 in direct classroom supplies and reimbursements. We had our full staff appreciation with the Shine Coffee Truck. It also does things like hot chocolate and whatnot, and we scheduled that for the day after the teachers' conference. And we have two events coming up that I want to give everyone a heads up on. The first is the Winter Holiday Fest, which is going to be at KIS this year, and that's on Saturday, December 6th. This is a total fun one, so, you know, bring friends, bring your kids, have a blast, see Santa, play games. This year, there's going to be a touch of truck as well, so taking advantage of the bigger space over at KIS. We've also got our holiday gift wrapping event coming up, which is one of our major fundraisers. That's going to be held up at the Kingston Mall from December 12th through the 24th. So the gift wrapping is great because you can either, you know, save yourself time, bring your gifts. We wrap them for a donation, but it's also a great way, if you want to give back and get into the holiday spirit, it's a really just fun way to spend a couple of hours. Our next meeting is January 13th at 7:00 PM in the KIS library. Everyone is welcome. And if you want to learn more about the PTO generally or any of these events, we're at KingstonPTO.com, so look us up.
That was great. Can I just tack on, but will you make sure I'm correct here? Do you still need volunteers for the gift wrapping?
Always.
Okay, so people can find you on Facebook to get the link?
Yeah, I think probably the easiest way is just contact us through the website, and then we'll send you the sign up GNS.
Okay, and also for volunteering, high school students would be getting volunteer hours?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so just so everybody has all that information. Thank you, Barbara.
Any other questions? Great, thanks, Seth.
Thanks, Barbara. Okay. Next, we have our consent agendas, which hopefully everybody had a chance to take a look at. Is there any comment or discussion, and if not, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay. Oh, we skipped ahead and we did approve the contract? Okay, unfinished business. Regionalization study update?
Okay. We actually had a meeting that had to be moved to January 21st because someone was out in Kingston, so it wasn't properly posted. But we're waiting on the Collin Center to begin the study and data collection, and it's underway.
Excellent.
January 21st.
Super, thank you. And we have a bus update from Sarah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to inform you that her student met with the Kingston Highway Department. It's green.
Oh, now they can hear you.
Okay. Her student met with the Kingston Highway Department about the bus stops for Country Club Way, and the suggestion is to move the bus stop that's at Brook Street to the corner of Country Club Way and Eagle Drive. Apparently, I think that's the name of the road. Apparently, when Eagle Drive was built, the developer improved the road from Eagle Drive down to Brook Street. And so the change will be that the bus is going to go into the neighborhood, into Eagle Drive, loop around, and back down out. I am waiting to get in touch with, so now that we know the change can be made, I need to get the communication to go out to the families, and then we will start the new bus route.
Okay.
That is the Country Club Way bus. Still no change to Brewster Road.
Okay. Thank you, and we appreciate your help in trying to get these solved. Obviously, moving the stop to Eagle Drive is not the ideal end solution. I do think that it is a reasonable temporary solution because it gets all of the children's cars, families waiting off of Brook Street. And now we are up for administration reports. Dr. Whitwell.
Hi, everyone. So we had recently our math and literacy night, so I just want to say a big thank you because we had a ton of families that came and participated. We had 100 books to give out. Kids were engaged in all sorts of math and phonics activities and literacy. I always say it's like a surprise party for me because I have a committee that does it all, so when I show up, I don't, no idea, really, and it's amazing. So our teachers are pretty incredible. HMH, our teachers are working really hard to roll out the new curriculum and do it fidelity. We have HMH coaches coming in on the ninth next week to do pilot lessons. We're going to do two per grade level, and that gives all teachers an opportunity to go in and observe the coach presenting the lesson, which is awesome. Outdoor classrooms, so we've had two committees so far, committee meetings so far. Last month, you guys approved the weather station, and we have an official name for that weather station that was voted on by the school. His name is Walter. There's lots of different options, but that's the one that won. We had our Thanksgiving feast last, last week, no, two weeks ago now. It was awesome. We had over 90 parents that come and volunteer. It's pretty phenomenal. We have four parents per class that come. So it's really awesome to see all the families coming in and supporting, and our kitchen staff did a wonderful job at that, too. We also do collections for boxes to donate to families that need. So we created 24 boxes, and that's special thanks to families because each kid is like assigned an item to bring in, like gravy or stuffing. The teachers put them together, and the teachers buy the turkeys for the boxes. I think you've heard about the new therapy dog in Kingston for KPD. Her name is Mabel, and she's made a couple visits, which has been pretty awesome. We're working on figuring out a schedule, but right now it's, I email Mabel, and then Mabel comes, so. I was going to mention the Winter Holiday Fest that's coming up, so thank you, Barbara, for doing that. And I don't know if there's any questions?
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Andrew Materna, principal of KIS. Thanks for having me here tonight. My update, I would like to start off by welcoming Mr. Rock Roberts as our interim assistant principal at KIS. Mr. Roberts comes to us with over two decades of experience, educational experience from the classroom to central administration, and he has hit the ground running, building relationships with the students and the staff, and supporting, supporting the KIS students. So welcome aboard, Rock. I want to echo the Winter Holiday Fest and kind of, and explore how big of a deal this is, that it's changing hands from KES to KIS. This will be this Saturday from 9:00 to noon, and it's expanded to K to 6. So the students and everybody, like Barbara was saying, you know, bring your friends. Touch of Truck's going to be there. It's going to be a great opportunity. K to 6 at KIS on Saturday. KIS also has HMH coming for our math curriculum, and that's on the 10th. We'll be having an HMH coach showing some lessons and working with the staff on some workshop models for using the math, new math curriculum. The 17th, December 17th, we have our band and chorus concert. That's from 6:00 o'clock to 7:00 o'clock at KIS, the auditorium. And finally, at the end of the month, the 23rd is an early release, which goes into winter break. It's right around the corner. It's right around the corner.
That is true.
And that's all I have for my update here.
That's great. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Winter report cards, I know it's probably in one of your handouts, but just because I know that that's one of three.
Report cards will be going out next Monday, the 8th.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything additional to what was in the consent agenda or will be in the budget presentation later on.
All right, I will also be briefed tonight. Some things we've already mentioned. At the K through 8 level, we're implementing HMH. In Kingston, we have two days of coaching coming up, December 9th and 10th. English Language Arts, we continue with the curriculum review, working with the group from Prism, the Prism grant that we have, to look at high-quality instructional materials. We continue to look and review our data, MCAS data, writing benchmarks for this past month. And that's pretty much it, so nothing new. Thank you.
So our district report this evening is going to focus on the preliminary budget. And if I could ask that we share the presentation with our viewers at home as well?
Your microphone, I guess, needs to be.
So we are happy to present our preliminary budget for you tonight. We work, we work with building principals and central office staff to present a budget that meets several of our goals. If you would scroll to the next page. We are always looking to support our student needs, to maintain appropriate class sizes and structures necessary for effective instruction. We consider and respond to the fiscal conditions of the town. And this year, our school committee asked us to present a level services budget. We also were asked and promised a voteable budget by December, so for this reason, we have also presented you with a budget that reflects only a 2.5% increase in what that would mean, as well as a comparison to level funded as well. And finally, we also strive to create a budget that supports our strategy for district improvement. Obviously, level services best supports the strategy for district improvement. If we scroll to the next page, you'll see that Kingston's 10-year enrollment data with some stabilizing numbers in KIS and a big decline from last year at KIS in terms of enrollment numbers. If we go to the next page, we'll go over some additional budget basics. But the most important budget basic that I want you to try to remember is that the numbers contained in this presentation are built upon assumptions and estimates, and these numbers are subject to change. So this is a snapshot in time, and it's built upon a number of estimates that can change. The utilities that are included represent an increase over a four-year average. The shared cost budget is included but has not been voted. Homeless and foster transportation has been adjusted based on prior year's expenses. At this time, we know of no official retirements, so no savings have been realized in that sense. We have budgeted the following for out-of-district vocational. Kingston currently has three students in programs for next year, but we have budgeted for five placements. We will not know the exact number of students who have applied for out-of-district until April 1st. Next slide, please. So we're going to start with level services, which is what was requested by our school committee. The projected level service budget for Kingston Elementary Schools for FY '27 would be $17,188,080. After the following offsets, payments for the elementary curriculum coordinator from the other two elementary schools and the Silver Lake Integrated Preschool room rental. If we were to estimate circuit breaker at 70% and transportation at 50% for circuit breaker and our IDEA grant estimate, these are all estimates. We do not have actual numbers from the state yet. So with these estimates, the FY '27 budget level service would be $16,349,160. This would represent a 4.8, a 4.82% increase over FY '26. That's level services. You'll also notice in your budget packet, both of our principals have narratives in the packet. They also have capital budget requests in the packet. And that typically, we ask the school committee to let us know which items they would like us to move forward in terms of asking the town to put on a warrant article because some of these items are over $25,000, some of the bigger projects, for example. And you notice the work that Sarah has done with the aligning the budgets in the chart of accounts with the DESI chart of accounts. And so sometimes you'll see sharp increases or decreases between line items. That's moving things into the appropriate line items now that we have all of those homes for all of those costs set up in our system. So if you look at the first one, our principal has highlighted some of the main areas of increases. And on the following page, you can see the KIS areas of notable increases as well. If we go to the next slide, you'll see the projected class sizes if we were to have a level services budget. Next slide, please. Yep. And so at KES, we would have no staff reductions at KES or KIS with a level services budget. And you'll see to the far right of the KES chart and the KIS chart what those class sizes would be in each of the grade levels. The next thing you asked from the principals, and they have responded with additional supports not included in level services, and these are not currently in the level service budget. So these numbers are not included in your budget for level services. This would be above and beyond level services. KES would request that we restore a 1.1 office para, and that would be possible to, if we only have seven kindergarten classes next year, which is difficult to estimate right now because we don't have strong or firm kindergarten numbers, we would be able to move a para into this position if we only had seven kindergarten classes, which would make it budget neutral or cost neutral. At KIS, we would be looking for a 1.0 FTE grounds slash custodial staff member. This is in part due to the large amounts of time required to maintain the fields. And the field maintenance is something that's not necessarily a priority in terms of the school academically or even the lessons, but the town relies on us for the field maintenance and upkeep, and that's currently being done by our in-district staff because a lot of town and community organizations use the fields. And so in order to keep up with the demands, KIS really needs this additional position because it's coming at the expense of maintaining the building and making sure that the needs of the students in the classrooms are being met. So next slide, we promised a voteable budget, so we have included what it would look like if there was a 2.5% increase. Now, a 2.5 increase sounds good, right? But if you recall, level services was almost at 5% increase. So we're looking at, if we were to go to a 2.5 increase, we would actually have to cut $362,436 from the level. we would actually have to cut $362,436 from the level service budget. And so we asked our principals to anticipate what that would look like in terms of cuts. And again, if you go to the next page, you'll see that the first thing we would reduce would be curriculum by $83,000. We would reduce two full-time general education teachers at KES. We would not fill a para position at KIS. And we would have a reduction of 1.0 FTE, one full-time general education teacher at KIS. And we would cut tech supplies and equipment by $14,000 approximately. We have already gone through with the principals as to what can be cut from things. They have, we have scrubbed this budget. We have met more than once to go over and make sure that nothing has been erroneously reported or requested. And they are, they cannot cut things any further. So that's why we would have to look at these types of reductions. If you go to the next slide, you'll see what these kinds of reductions, the impact would have on class sizes. So the reduction would most likely, although we can't say for certain, because we don't know what the kindergarten exact numbers will be, but it would be likely that the reductions would occur in grade 1 and 2. And you'd see the class sizes adjusted there. At KIS, the reduction would be at...
Grade 4.
Looks like we reduced two grades.
It would be 3 and 4, done though. 7. 6th grade.
6th grade.
Well, 6th grade currently has six teachers, though.
Fourth and 6, looks like they went down.
In level service, it's listed as 7 teachers.
So it's, the updated version should say 7 teachers in grade 3, 8 teachers in grade 4, 7 teachers in grade 5, 7 teachers in grade 6.
No, no.
Yep. Yes, please.
So with the 2.5% increase, the staff would be reduced in 6th grade at the level service. The previous chart, a staff, right now, we currently, we have eight 3rd grade teachers, but with the class size going down to 155 for next year, the plan was to shift a staff member into 6th grade, so...
Rather than shift, that would be the eliminated position.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Right, because there's only 6.
Right, okay. Nope, that totally makes sense. Thank you.
So if we go to the next slide, you'll see the impact of larger class sizes and the loss of student and teacher supports. If you go to level funded, we're looking at even further potential cuts. An FY '27 level funded budget for Kingston Elementary School after offsets would be $15,596,804. This would require a cut of $7,52,356 to be cut from the level service budget. And so you would also be looking at, in addition to the cuts listed for 2.5, an additional 4.7 FTE reduction in force of teaching staff. And if you go to the next page, you will see the impact on class sizes. Now, again, if you're looking at the updated version, the numbers will be different than the previous version for KIS. Those numbers were updated today. So KES would be anticipated at class sizes of 23, 24 for kindergarten, grade 1, 21, 22, grade 2, 22, 23 per class size. Whereas KIS, grade 3 would be at 22 to 23, grade 4, 21, 22, grade 5, 23, 24. And grade 6 would be 25, 26 for average class size. Next slide, please. So at this point, you have an, a voteable budget. And in your packet, you'll also have language, should the committee decide to vote a budget this evening. However, I do caution that there are a great number of estimates in the budget. Also, at this time, principals are here to discuss any capital plan priorities that you may have in the packet that you may want them to go over with you. And we're looking for you for our next steps in terms of what, if anything, you'd like to see.
Thank you. Jeanne.
First of all, Sarah, thank you for responding to my email. I see that it was obviously in the middle of the presentation that we are estimating 70% circuit breaker. I think as we've seen throughout the, you know, ebbs and flows of circuit breaker, it's been at 75 recently. I don't suggest we ask Sarah to move any of that number. I think 70 was a good number to estimate. I do have a question. What is the transportation reimbursement that we are anticipating for Kingston? Because we don't get, we're not regionalized. So what if any transportation...
This is for special education transportation, not...
So with the special education transportation, that clarifies that. Thank you. And so that number also could be, it has been more in the past for the special transportation, but 50% is a good estimate.
I believe that this was, we're going into our second year where we get transportation reimbursement. I'm just trying to pull up. We did, we went back 10 years. Transportation started to be reimbursed in FY '21, sorry. And it has gone as low as 57.76% and as high as 75%, but...
So 50% is a nice conservative estimate.
These are conservative estimates, the 70 and the 50.
That's good news. I just wanna make a comment going off what Dr. Prue just said. I don't recommend that we vote any budget tonight. I think that these are numbers that we can present to the town in good faith that we've... Sarah's done the work. She's put together our budget presentation. This is where we're currently at. I actually think we're in a much better position than we might have felt like we would have been at a year ago. These numbers don't scare me, looking at them as first draft. I think that there's gonna be a lot of things that are gonna need to be discussed throughout the district, specifically with Silver Lake budget, that will be reviewed next week and then Halifax pumped in and kind of see where, as a whole, everything's coming in at. But I definitely do not recommend that we take a vote on these numbers tonight. They're palatable, I think, to, you know, consider. And I think that once, once the transparency is out to the public, that the schools are in under 5%, which is the first time, I think, we've been under 5% in four, four or five years now. So...
I remember being under 5% and I've been on this committee for 11 years.
So I think for a first draft, this is, this is better news than, I think, expected. And I think it'll give the town something to work with as they work with the other departments. That's just my two cents.
I agree. When is the timeframe that we would have to?
So this is the earliest we've ever reviewed the budget.
Is that true?
Yes. And this is because of pushback from the town. Typically, we don't see the first draft until mid-January. And then by then, it's, we're up against the state numbers, which don't come out until the end of January. But the town's really been aggressive, because we have a bylaw that says that we should have been reviewing the budget by November. And we've never adhered to that, ever. So...
We're getting closer?
We're getting closer, but this is also, again, as Dr. Prue cautioned at the beginning, these are estimates. And we won't have any of the state figures until the end of January. That could swing us one way or the other. But I think that we're in a good spot to have at least reviewed and kind of be able to see what's going on. So, and current kindergarten enrollment, if I'm not mistaken, is like 124 right now, right? Or 1, I'm sorry.
163, wasn't that it?
No, no, that's what is the anticipated, right?
That's an average.
Right, that, right, that's what's built in, is 161 was built in. But, but current numbers are like 124, right?
Uh, 151.
Oh, it's higher. Okay.
Can I just say that I'm never afraid of level funding, ever. I think level funding in the school system is never correct. Level service, I understand, but level funding, and I've said this since day one, so people can say that all they want, and I get it with the talent, but you can't have level funding, ever, with the schools. Level service, I understand that. I can, I can kind of wrap my head around it. But these numbers are looking, like, and I've done this for a very long time. These numbers are palatable. I mean, again, we've seen some years where they're not... You know, you can never know who's gonna walk into the district tomorrow. So, you know, it is early. Like we say, this is the earliest we've seen it in a long time. And I'm really appreciative of doing this, because I know how hard it is to estimate anything. I mean, we gotta remember, this is FY '27. We're not, we're still 125 right now. So, you know, there's so many things that come into it, but I think you've done a great job of trying to find a way. But I will say that I will never vote level funding, ever, in my lifetime on this committee. So just to let you know.
Sarah, I've asked a couple of people now if we're aware of what number might drive an override. And I don't know if there's, if that's a fair question to ask, because it may be more of a dollar amount than a percentage. But do we know that 2.5%, is that from the meeting that we had with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee? Is that where that recommendation came from? Just to remind.
It was just a middle-of-the-road number as a target for something that might be voteable.
No, I think, I think that was a fair percentage to work with.
Thank you. Thanks. Would either of the principals like to speak to capital planning projects? Which is a rough overview, if you think so. Everybody can hear.
All right. So for KES, we have for, it's actually FY '26 was the new chiller, which is our AC unit for half of our building. And we hold, we host ESY, so that's why that's necessary. And that's kind of been on its way out for a couple of years now and has been kind of kicked down the road. But a new Kubota as well has been on there, just because we have a lot of landscaping. And ours is about to not be working. And then there's some repointing of masonry walls as needed, based on that facilities assessment we did. I think that was two years ago. So there's just some masonry work that needs to get done. And then if we look at the elevator hydro enhance upgrade, that was estimated in the next two to three years, we had to get that done. And that was from August 2024. And I believe that's a requirement. So that's a concern of mine. That's for $55,000 that has to get done in order for the elevator to be, to pass inspection. Larger capacity generators on that as well, because it doesn't, when our power goes out, as we saw, I think, was it last year or the year before? The whole building is not up and running, only certain places are. So for instance, our interior lights and our interior classrooms and ceiling don't have lights. They just might have like the emergency lights. And then, you know, we love to extend that parking lot, so we can have more parking spaces in FY '29 there. So, and then just continue to work on the building envelope. But I think my biggest concern is that elevator, as well as the chiller, if we're gonna be hosting ESY. Any questions?
But Megan, I think this is a good time to thank the voters for approving the temporary override for the 11% of the KES roof to be replaced. I think that that's going to pay dividends, that we're not going to be paying for patchwork for something that needed to be done. So that will definitely help the building.
And helps us avoid any catastrophes. Thank you. Okay.
At KIS, we have a couple of projects that are, we're waiting for bids on. And those date back a couple of years. So we have some funding for some bigger projects that we're, we need to get ahold of before we move forward with any other capital planning projects. So for '26, '27, for next year, we felt that it was imperative to take care of the stuff that we have already been approved for. We just need to procure the bidding appropriately and take care of those big projects before we move forward with other projects. So if we move through the '27, '28 projects, we have our hydro tank miscellaneous related items to our hydro tank, miscellaneous HVAC repairs, cleaning our air ducts, which is something that we're looking to get into a cycle of doing, to make sure that our air is clean. And then a chiller, based on the result of a building evaluation. This is our to-be-determined, from something we've already, we've been previously approved for funding, to have the building, the building to be evaluated for air conditioning needs at KES. So the chiller is kind of, is pending that evaluation. And that's one of those bigger projects that we have already been approved for. It's just, we need to get the bids for it. '28, '29, similar to KES, where we put on here replacement of our generator. The generator, we had some difficulties with last year. It's up and running. There should be no problems for it. But it's time to start looking at replacing the generator. The building and envelope repairs that are based on a study that was done back in February of '24 lists a number of repairs. And then continued roof work is slated for '28, '29. And then some other things, parking lot repairs in the future, a few, four years down the line. And then window and door sealant, based on building envelope study, also done in February, that same envelope study.
That's a good question, but right around '29, '30, isn't that when the roof would need to be replaced?
It already needs to be replaced. We just don't hit the time.
Was it, because it's 25 years, I thought, was right around.
So by then, or maybe...
Right, yeah.
We've already needed repairs, but it just...
It's not as bad, yes.
Keeps increasing their age limit.
I think that is something just to keep in mind for the committee, though.
Yeah, we're continually patching the roof right now with minor repairs.
But then you can't do the whole, because God forbid you patch the roof. So now you can't have the full roof repaired, because God, you had that piece repaired.
Any other questions for Mr. Materna?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much to all of you. I know there's a lot of time and effort put into this, and we really appreciate it. And I agree with Jeanne, this is better than we expected. And hopefully, the estimated numbers will continue on track or better. Okay. Subcommittee reports. Admin review. We still have not met...
Still do not have a meeting.
We've been waiting on Halifax and their reorganization.
I believe on December 7th or 8th.
Okay. So hopefully, we will get that on the books. Pilgrim Area Collaborative. Sheila.
I'm so loud, it doesn't really matter. But, so yeah, we actually had our auditors come in and we had a clean, a clean budget, final version. We actually, this meeting actually decided that we would make notes for the committees to actually send over if you wanted them, just so you could see them. Because the secretary that takes the notes decided that it's hard to figure out what everybody needs. So she actually makes an actual secondary. So if anybody wants the notes after the fact, I can't send them to our meeting minutes if people want them after the fact, too. We amended the budget at this time of the year. It's up and down, because obviously, report cards haven't come out for first term. So you don't know who's gonna go out of district or in district. We did talk about the surplus. There will be a little bit of surplus coming back. I believe we were gonna get about, I think, $8,000, I think, back is what... I know they're gonna talk to Sarah about that. And then, you know, obviously Kingston gets, Silver Lake gets more, but Silver Lake was about $25,000. But we got about $8,000 back from surplus. So that's good news. It's always nice to get a little money back from the schools. So that was it.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Union 31. Jeanne.
We had a meeting on December 13th, and all of the large presentations generally run full. So thank you for joining. We heard from our curriculum coordinator, our director of student services, as well as our technology director. So we have been advised of the needs for the district going forward. And we will talk more about the... And we will talk more about the shared cost budget in the next meeting.
Great. Are those presentations available on the district website if people wanted to watch them?
The budget presentation?
The one from the Union 31 meeting.
Yep, all of the recordings are, are on the budget website under school committee meetings.
Perfect, so if anybody would like to take a look at those, you are welcome to do so. Negotiations. We will be entering into negotiations this year with both our teachers' union and our support staff, but we have not met yet. Budget advisory, we have been advised. Facility oversight. Is there any new facility information? Okay. And policy. We will start with the second reading of these policies that I will let the motion maker read, if somebody would like to make a motion to adopt these policies.
Wave the second reading and approve.
Approve. Yep, okay.
The one that we held last month is not in there, right?
Nope, those are, we'll.
Okay.
Those are under first reading.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to waive the second reading and approve policies A D D A, E C A B. Can you hear me out? I would like to make a motion to waive the second reading and approve policies A D D A, E C A B, E F B A, G B E D C, J J E, K B E, K B G, and K I.
Friendly amendment, I'd just like to remove J J E and K B E from that as they still have not been moved forward with the first reading. All right, is there a second?
All second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, now we can come back to the policies that we had set aside at our last meeting and not moved forward with.
Excuse me, I would be willing to move policy K B E, excuse me, K B G. Let me just double check that I have the right one.
No, K B E, you are it.
Okay, regarding the 501(c)(3) status, right?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we approve and waive the first reading of policy K B E.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then I would recommend that we not review policy J J E. This is the one that would disrupt both the K F E as well as the P T O from fundraising with the Booster Thon and Fund the Fund. So, we have to comply with the law regardless, so I, I wouldn't want to do anything that inhibits our parent-teacher groups from fundraising. And I don't think that they do anything that's forcing anyone to participate.
I agree with that.
So is your motion to?
I just had a question, Jeannie, I'm sure at the Association of School Committees, does that come up at all as far as like, does it interpretation issue or?
Not, I didn't sit through any of the presentations, so I didn't see that this was something that was discussed. My conversation with Jason Fraser was that these are all M A S C recommended policies, meaning they come from Mass General Law. So, you know, student groups aren't, parent-teacher groups aren't allowed to bribe children to participate with fundraiser. It, it's almost like, you can't pay a teacher $20 to get a better grade if you would, you know? So it, it's kind of saying, they don't, they want it to be more equitable for students to be able to fundraise. So if a family feels like they have to participate in something for their child to get rewarded or get extra recess or something, that's, I think, the purpose behind the policy. My opinion is, as it's written, it would prevent friendly classroom participation contests, things that our volunteers spend hours in the hallway decorating the billboards so that the kids can come in and see, you know, the ice cream scoops or, you know, the balloons moving or something. So I just think that as it's written, it would preclude that kind of fundraising that right now is not in our school budget. So all of our fundraising, all of our field trips, all of our teacher appreciation events, they're not fundraising, you know, so that we can have, you know, things that are not equitable for all students, if you would. So everything they're fundraising for is for all of our students and our teachers. They're not fundraising for us to have, you know, Teslas or anything.
No, I understand the intent, I just think there's some unintended consequences that just haven't been considered.
I think, I, I agree that the intent is, intent is correct, but it's too limiting in the way it's worded right now.
It feels restrictive the way that it's written.
Agreed.
Okay, so is your motion that we do not move forward with policy J J E?
Yes.
To clarify.
Yes. And, and I mean, like, Dr. Prue can always update us if something comes back that, you know, for instance, say someone files a complaint and says that their child is being unfairly targeted because they don't participate in a fundraiser, if you would. That would be something that I think could be addressed at that point. I think that by passing this policy, it would prevent those two organizations specifically from being able to fundraise as they do now.
I would just like to point out that a key point of this was the fact that a permit does need to be obtained for any kind of raffles. That is specifically outlined in Mass General Law. So that is something, whether or not we pass this policy, that is the law, so.
And.
To make that clear, that doesn't change.
I believe, I believe that, at least when I was on the.
501(c)(3) is the other one we passed.
When I was on the P T O, we did obtain raffle permits for like the holiday fest and things like that when they're selling the raffle permits. That's something that goes through the town clerk's office to purchase the annual permit as well as booster organizations are required to do.
Can I ask how this affects us if Halifax Plumton and Silver Lake say yes to this? It doesn't affect us?
It just doesn't, it wouldn't be listed under a Kingston policy. For instance, Kingston has a policy that's on, if, when you go to the S L R S D website and you go to policies, some might say Kingston only or Halifax only. This just wouldn't be listed under a Kingston policy.
Okay.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the table to not move forward with this. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And to be honest, I'm not even sure we need to vote that necessarily, it's just because it's up for review.
Yes. Okay, and technology, which I don't believe we have any additional information with that. Other matters unforeseen at time of posting? I don't believe anyone has anything to move, okay, perfect. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sheila Vaughn.
Yes.
Jennifer Crouchen.
Yes.
Jessie Keith.
Yes.
Jeannie Coleman.
Yes.
And I am a yes, thank you very much. Happy holidays, everybody, and we will see you in 2026.
Happy holidays.
I know, I'm looking for a motion and you're over there singing.